General Orders of Business, Unfinished Business. The first item up would be the Michigan State University Extension MSUE Memorandum. This would be our guest talking about coming in. Sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome and thank you for your time.
Glad to be here. So I appreciate the opportunity to address the board in its entirety, but also to be able to provide some other information as long as I'm here with some updates. This is, the one in here is on the current 4H clubs.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. We have Dave Radloff, put your hand up, Dave. He is our 4H program coordinator, who's been doing this kind of work 25-plus years here in the county. So very proud of Dave, and he's literally had generations of youth who've come through there. Anybody here on the board familiar with how long MSU Extension has been in Delta County? Over 100 years. Over 100 years. We have four working on fifth-generation 4H folks in this county, and in all counties in the state of Michigan. You haven't seen me here in a while, and that's for a number of reasons. I've had some health problems, I've had family with some health problems, and some things that I've had to address. So that's things that have taken me actually away from the UP for weeks at a time, and was able to appreciate it, Ashley, to make some adjustments here last minute to be able to make sure that I was here. So we have 100-year history of serving this county in multiple ways, and I appreciate there was, I reviewed the videos several times from the last meeting. Here's, there is some confusion, but a lot of support generally, and I appreciate that support for our programs and what we do. You have your annual report that I think was handed out last time, but if not, if not, let's just go with this for right now then, too. Actually, if you could just pass that down, there's three different copies there. Two different copies.
Okay. Okay.
It should be all together, so if you grab one with the color on the bottom, then they'll keep you informed. The top one will be on the U.S. Census Facts, specific for Delta County. Yep, that's it, there's this three. They're being passed out, I'll cover a couple other highlights, too. We have had Dr. Jesse Randall, who's with our Forest Innovation Center, that was referenced at your last meeting, out of Hyde. Encourage you folks to get out there, any of the public, too. He's doing an amazing job out there. He's had over $4 million in grants and research in the last four years. Most recently, had fifth-grade students out there, over 150 youth, who were in the center on April 5th, and had it open to the public. Hopefully, some of you folks were out there. 450 people showed up on Saturday, April 6th and the 7th, to be able to demonstrate and display what they have for the research that's going out there. We also have, as part of our footprint, we have Tyler Sisson, who is with MSU, but works out at Bay College as a recruiter for the Institute Ag Tech Program. And then we have two educators here. We have Dave Radloff, who runs our 4H program here, and we have Stephanie Ostranga, who is, does our food safety, but also helps supervise some program instructors, who are our community nutrition staff. Sure if I should wait for questions or just go into the whole process here, but I would like to address a couple of things straight on. There were some statements that were made that I'm offended at, truthfully, because they insinuated things without documentation, without facts or data, that we're slowly indoctrinating youth into DEI. Short answer is, is that we're not. We abide by the same federal rules, state guidelines, as everybody else. Ask anybody in the audience or the board, are you familiar with this? Injustice for All statement? This is a federal requirement. I'm not sure how many places you have this posted, Ashley, but this is a federal requirement, that if you receive federal funds, this is part of who you are. What does this say? Anybody have any idea? It talks about, "We are open to everyone. We provide access to everyone. We don't judge based on what skin color, what tone, what pair of pants they have on, what color their hair is." That's part of what we do in government. As a university employee, and our folks, we're part of government. As part of the folks up here, you're volunteered to serve. You're part of government. We're here to help our communities. If people want to get down in the weeds about DEI, I would encourage you to take a look at this first, because we're mandated, the county employees are mandated, state, federal, local employees are mandated, if they receive federal funds. Be allowed training to understand what this means. You may have seen in newspapers here a while back, they had 75-year history for Jackie Robinson. All right? People remember Jackie Robinson, getting age demographics here, sorry. Right? First African-American allowed to play baseball. Why wasn't he allowed to play baseball? That's the other part of it. When we talk about DEI, we're not indoctrinating youth, we don't have training for youth. I hold training twice a year for our staff that I help manage and coach in the Central Western UP field offices. We talk about equity and inclusion. Does everybody understand equity? We had some statements up here, and there were statements in the past. I think one of the biggest things we have with DEI, or civil rights or any of this, people get hung up on terms. They don't understand, if I say the word "blue" right now to you, how many people understand the word "blue"? Do you understand "blue"?
No.
Good answer, why not?
Haven't been involved with that type of politics.
Could be politics. This young man has a shade of jeans on, this lady here has a different shade. If I don't define what "blue" means, it could mean somebody is really upset or sad. Have nothing to do with politics or a pair of jeans. We have to be sure when we're talking about any term, as simple as a color, what that means. So, given the training that I hold, and the civil rights training that's mandated by law, twice a year, we talk about incrementally with our staff.
Thank you, sir.
We are absolutely not indoctrinating or infiltrated by anybody. You, too, there. I'll pass these around if you've got. This is what we mean about equity, and I apologize, I don't have anything better, but if we hold a program that is open to all, and I don't have accommodation statements, I'm violating federal law. If I don't have a program that's in an ADA compliability, I'm violating federal law. When we talk about equity in terms of equity and inclusion, this is what we mean. All right? If we had a program to have kids learn how to, people ride a bicycle, go out and have fun in the park, if we gave them all the same-sized bike, would they be able to participate? No. So equity is trying to make sure that we can get the right equipment to the right participant based on their needs, not what we think that they need to have to be able to accommodate and participate. When we talk about inclusion in my training with my staff, we talk about, and I would draw you to your census facts that you have right here. We go through these every year, and they get updated. Veterans, do you have any account?
Approximately 3,500.
Veterans?
Yes.
All right. Anybody want to take a stab at it? Good answer, you're close. Can I find my own shoe here? 33, thank you, Ashley. 33, 24. What percentage of that is your population?
Close to 10%.
Close to 10%. What's the state average? Half that, 4.9. So when we talk about, are we reaching audiences and try to be more inclusive, we talk about veterans. We talk about disabled, and this will tell you, what's the percentage of people that are disabled in Delta County? Some of you looking, some of you waiting. 12.8% based on this data. So 13% are disabled. I've been blessed to be married to a special ed teacher for 33 years, and she humbles me sometimes because we don't, in Extension, do enough. We try, all of us try, to be more inclusive of people who have disabilities. She worked with severe and profound special ed kids in high school. It's a tough crowd, I couldn't do probably for even half a day. But what are we doing in our programs that Dave runs, anybody else runs in the program? What do we do to try to make sure that we're accessible? That we contact special ed teachers? That we make other people with disabilities aware that we have a program, they might be interested? That's what we do, and that's what we talk about in terms of being inclusive. And in terms of diversity, if you look at actually what we have for the contract MOA and the same thing, it's about all of the socioeconomic classes. It's not one or the other. We're not teaching kids to be gay or trans or anything like that. But if they are, and they want access to a program, we absolutely will welcome them in, just like we would any other citizen, any other person, because they're all people. We abide by the same federal laws that you do. We abide by the same programs that you're required to also. This other one that I have as a handout is the Delta County Kid Count. This gives you demographic information on how many kids are in poverty, ALIS components, things of that nature. We talk about civil rights frequently in my organization. The reason why we do that is we want to make sure that the person who might be a disabled veteran, where they park, where they go to a program, how they have access to it, is the same as a young mother with a stroller and a kid that she's trying to pull behind the stroller. It's the same thing. It's not about, we're trying to indoctrinate anybody or infiltrate, this is not part of our youth programming. We make our staff aware of these things that are required by law, and in doing so, they're better prepared to work with any number of people in your community, of all walks of life, of all different types. Makes it more robust for our programs, makes your community more robust for the people who are here, living, paying taxes. A quick side note, our financial footprint here, just for our county office, two employees, and the people out at the research station, it's over $600,000 to $700,000. Might be even a little bit north of that. Our livestock auction that Dave and I, see, we have a number of 4H people here, because they're wearing their shirts, appreciate that. Livestock auction at the fair is over $600,000 that youth raise those animals, sell those animals. That's what Dave and his people and all the volunteers that he has, they do. We don't have leaders that are trained in DEI so they can go in and, we don't do any of that. We make our staff aware for federal law, and that's how we are. So, I put a lot out there, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners?
Appreciate the county board's continued support. We've been here for 100 years for the people like you and the people who came before you and supported you.
Questions, gentlemen? Mr. Peterson?
Not just yet.
Okay. Mr. View?
Well, I want to thank you for coming here. I've always liked 4H. I was never involved in it, but...
I got to turn on my voice. Like I said, I appreciate you coming here today. I did a little research myself. I got many programs that I looked at, that the 4H offers, from five-years-old up to 17, I think it is, if I'm not mistaken.
19.
Oh, up to 19, okay. Well, I'm a little off. I mean, you're serving over 200,000 kids in the state of Michigan, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, from what I looked, from my self-educating, yeah, it is, 5 through 19. And it's all educational opportunities. I read about DEI. I have my opinions about it, but it will not affect the good that this program does and how I will support it, because just what I printed out here was 135 programs that are available to people in our community locally, and there's over 200 throughout the whole state. And one of the biggest things that I liked about it, government essential issues. You also help us out, and there's a lot of programs and seminars where we can become better public servants to the people. So you have my support now and whenever else it comes up because of the good I see you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Paul. I don't think we should have been this far, we should have had it passed already, but it is what it is, and I thank you for everything you and Michigan State does, MSUE does, and I do have, will support you all the time.
Chairman?
Paul, the, I asked a question. If you review the tapes, you already know that, so that, you said you did, because we get a notification and you have your disclaimer on your materials that you send us each month. And I was surprised when I read that, I believe it was the March letter, that you're wholeheartedly backing DEI and very proud of doing so. And so I asked a question, why, what does that have to do with a part of this? And that's why we're here. So, I'm glad for your explanation here, but I do, your paper you handed out here with the equality and equity, I mean, you show people on bicycles, you show someone in a wheelchair, and then them on a, the assumption would be, and it's under equality, that there's, all the bikes are the same size. And then that equity is, well, we'll get the right bike for the right size. Reality is here, why is that called equity at all? Equity is basically a person's worth, net worth. And according to this, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Civil Rights Act, these different aspects of it would, not all, everyone has the same-sized bike. They would get it accordingly. Just as we came up here in the parking lot, there are parking spots set aside for those that have the handicap or what have you. So I, I'm not quite understanding why your equity is, everybody has the same-sized bike, or not equity, equality is, if one has the same-sized bike, which doesn't work for some, and then equity has supposedly the bike that fits for each other. How does, I'm trying to figure out what, how is this supposed to make some sense here?
So what is your question?
Question is, why, your definition of equity here, what are you calling equality? What are you calling equity?
So that was an example of what, a visual guide for you, Bob, that was not necessarily how you define equity or equality. And I'm not sure how much the board would like to go down in the weeds or the dirt on all of that kind of stuff, but again, it comes back to terminology and how are you trying to define stuff? We have, under federal law, a lot of those things are already defined in terms of Forests, so it's not like there's personal, my equity versus your equity or whatnot, and use an example of equity that had financial, that a lot of people don't even associate necessarily because they don't have the means to understand equity. And we work with an awful lot of people that don't have a lot of resources, financial resources, so that's even just using a word like that without being better defined, is important. For us, equity means that we're going to try to accommodate and provide access, because that's what education is about, is about access, so that they can participate, hence the bicycle. So if they're not able to participate, so let me, maybe go down this direction, Bob, just thinking off the cuff. You and I met about 14 years ago, I think, in your pasture, when we were doing some work there and whatnot, and you were still farming, and you had some amazing salad mix of all sorts of stuff with your patties that you were doing there. We did not have one person that was female. Okay? Not necessarily a good thing or a bad thing, but if I look at parity, which is parity is a part of this, which gets back into equity and equality in some ways, it's important for us to host a program, to be able to do that, when we, when Dave or any of our educators, any of our staff have a program, they go through, okay, where are we going to hold that? Is it ADA compliant? How is the lighting? How is this? You know, we have all sorts of accommodations for people who may have vision problems, may have hearing problems, anything like that. If we don't provide that, then it's not equal for them to be able to, it's not equitable for them to be able to participate, because they have some barriers for any number of reasons. Part of this says, government is barrier-free. Our educational programs are barrier-free, and it's against the law, infallible, if you create additional barriers to access, and things of that nature. So we're very, very much, that's what we talk about, that's what we teach to our staff in terms of equity, equality, and inclusion. You know, if I take a look again at your numbers, or any county numbers, we're very high in terms of veterans. What, I saw a gentleman here, you've got a Marine, I think, check it out. How are we doing more than when we just create a flyer, give it to the newspaper, the radio, if it's targeted or special for veterans, that they have access and know about that? Do we go through a VSO? Do we go through the Veterans Hospital? What are the other places that we do that? That's part of equity. It's part of inclusion. That's all part of it. So that's just a graphic example, without having to get defined, because if I define something right here, right now, then whatever will be or will not be, so, in terms of how people want to interpret that. We would be glad to have any of us have a greater discussion at any given point in terms of the nuances of what people want, in terms of equity and inclusion for their own. We don't teach that to anybody other than our staff, just become more aware. That's it. It's an example, Bob.
Well, an example, but you used the example of being on our farm, which we are still farming, in the pasture salad, as you mentioned, and that there were no women there, but the program was, or the event was open to everyone. That choice is the individual. So I don't, I don't see where that's a good example at all, on the equity. There's not an equity situation, the program's available, those that wish to participate do, and those that don't, don't.
If we had had somebody with a wheelchair, we would have absolutely made sure, if somebody signed up and said, "I have this disability," we would have absolutely made sure that they have access to be able to get in there. And how are, and we have resources we can acquire from campus to be able to do that. And that's one of the things, as part of our process, is to make sure if we have somebody that has special needs, we're going to do everything that we can to accommodate about that.
And that's understandable, and that's, and we've had many of what we call pasture walks, and we've had people who've had different disabilities, and we've provided for that. But we don't call it equity, we don't, it's just part of what we do. And, you know, what you're using right here is diversity, equity, and inclusion reminds me of the, back in the 20s, there was, in the 1920s, we're on this century 20s, but in the 1920s, there was a, oh, a theory that came out called eugenics. And it was started by, basically, it was one of the starters of it was a woman named Margaret Sanger, and it helped to design the program for the master race for Adolf Hitler in the 30s, when they took over, and it continued. And that, and Margaret Sanger's program, her organization was called eugenics, and they changed their name in 1940, '41 because it was so similar, it was the same name that was being used in Nazi Germany at the time for the Holocaust and whatever else they were doing with their eugenics, and they changed the name to Planned Parenthood. I think you have a situation here where you're using a description, diversity, equity, inclusion, which is right, a delivery system out of critical race theory, that probably a wrong use of it. You use the acronym ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, and yet you're using language here that would put you in a different category of this. In a sense that, American with Disabilities Act, yes, accommodate, and you're calling it equity. Well, that's accommodating under the American Disabilities Act, this is the parking spaces out here, accommodate those that are handicapped so they can have a closer proximity to getting into a building. But the language you're using sets, brings into question what you're doing right away. I think you need to go back and take a look at what you're using for your language, and adjust it according to what you're actually doing. Because you're fulfilling the American Disabilities Act and a lot of other things, and I think that's where the issue is. Because the, the critical race theory is way, way deeper than what you're bringing forward to us, and, but the fact that you're using that language puts you in that same boat. And I would be careful of that boat, I'd find a different boat to get into. Because the critical race theory has been used, equity as an example here, quoting from an article, is that, "In the name of equity, UCLA law professor and critical race theorist Cheryl Harris," and this is from March of, March of 2021, this, when this was written, "has proposed suspending private property rights, seizing land, and wealth, and redistributing them along racial lines. Critical race guru Ibram X. Kendi, who directs the Center for Anti-Racist Research at Boston University, has proposed the creation of a Federal Department of Antiracism. This department would be independent, unaccountable to the elected branches of government, would have the power to nullify, veto, or abolish any law at any level of government, and curtail the speech of political leaders and others who are deemed insufficiently anti-racist." And it goes on. That's what we're dealing with when we talk about critical race theory. And when you put yourself in that camp, you're going to be subject to questions about what you're actually doing. And so I would strongly suggest that you would go back and talk to the MSU and whatever else, the people that you have to, about this, but also realize when you go back, that critical race theory was the latest in, I call it step three, I suppose the third time is the charm. The first was political correctness came about, and then, then we went through that as, and it's, we still got some remnants of that around.
Point of order.
Point of order.
What's your point, sir?
We're getting off topic. We were, I'm just, I don't, I respect what he's trying to say, but he's going too...
Doily noted.
Well, I would like to get back on topic on...
This is on topic.
He's on topic, but duly, your point is...
You're teaching us stuff that...
Teaching you, yes.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'd like a point of order vote that...
Your point of order is noted, right?
Well, what does that mean?
It means, I'm noting your objection right now, and if, please continue.
Okay.
All right? He gets your point.
Yes. No, this is, this all comes together in this, is that we have, and that, and we have affirmative action that took place, which was massive discrimination, and this critical race theory is basically affirmative action on steroids. You're using the long, wrong language here. And, yes, you've done a lot of fine work over the years, but as what's happened with other organizations that get into this, eventually, you will get corrupted. There's really no way around it, it's just the way the system works, it slowly corrupts. The Boy Scouts are a disaster now, and because of the, they've allowed things that shouldn't have taken place to be, quote, politically correct and what have you. So I, I really believe that the, my question was valid, why is this in here? And you're, you're not really doing equality, equity, you're fulfilling these federal statutes. DEI is not something that's federally mandated, the American Disabilities Act is. So, anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I promise I will keep this short. First off, I'm going to just say right out that I have no interest in punishing our children that are in the 4H program. I think that's a wonderful program, and I never got into it, but I was a Boy Scout. I kind of look at them same line. What I see, what I have a problem with, and this is what, I'm glad, I'm really glad that we had you come and talk, because this is what we wanted to do, is get it out in the open. Kind of along the lines with Mr. Barron here, I see, the second picture, is equality of opportunity. We aren't putting up any barriers to stop anybody, we're giving them an equal chance to get involved. What I see is inequity, is equity of outcome, where whether you do the work or you don't do the work, you still get the same thing. So that's, that's where I was at with this, and whether I'm wrong or not, I guess, is neither here nor there, I am going to support the children, but like I said, I look at as equity, as equity and outcome, whether you, everybody has $5, whether you work hard or you don't. work hard or you don't. Equality and an opportunity to me is, is the second picture, where everybody has the opportunity to participate and get the equipment that they need or whatever. So that's, that's where my thinking is on this. I guess I'm kind of with Mr. Barron, is I think that there, there's some, in what you're explaining, there's some verbiage situation, so, but this is, what we're doing right now is one of the things I was really looking forward to, getting it out in the open, talking about, let the community know about it, and educate us a little bit. So I will leave it at that, and I really appreciate the 4H program, and I'm on the fair board, and I work with those people there, so I know, I know what those kids just love coming in and doing the cattle stuff and that kind of thing, and the other things that 4H involves. Thank you.
Mr. Putnam, I'd like to thank you for coming in, I understand you've got some issues with health and your family, and I'm terribly sorry for that. I start off, I've always been and always will be a fan of 4H. My support won't waver. Not everything the federal government puts out, I agree with, and that's the reason why I wanted to come in and talk with you. You answered my question when you said that this is something that, you know, your staff is taught twice a year, and so I'm, you know, I understand you're asking for an increase in your appropriation, and I'm not a fan of DEI, CRT, that's okay, you know, I don't need to be. I don't like those two programs, but I do like your program, and I'm prepared to support your program, simply because of the fact that you answered in your, your opening statements or, you know, as you were presenting information. So anybody else, please?
I don't want to be taken wrong, but I'm not very versed in DEI, but I do know that I believe in merit and achievement according to the ability of everyone, and I think what you've talked about, that wasn't brought up as one of the things that I was reading on, online, I don't know if you can believe everything you read online, but there's hundreds and hundreds of pages of stuff on the internet, and it, and most of the stuff that I was looking at was from the sixties, the civil rights movement, how all of this stuff has come forward today, and it's the young generation that is looking to push a lot of this stuff, because they believe in it. They believe in this, and granted, I'm old school, and there's pronouns and stuff that I don't even understand what they're trying to say, and I'm just going to stick with my old school till I'm proven differently, and achievement, merit, stuff like that. So I just wanted to get that clear in case someone thought I was for DEI. There's a lot of things in there that make sense, but it is twisted many times around to have negative effects on different organizations. But thank you.
Mr. Melner? Mr. Peterson?
I'm all done, thanks.
Mr. Barron? I'm good. Well, thank you very much, sir. I truly appreciate your time coming in, and obviously you're a wealth of knowledge. Thank you very much. I hope you felt welcome and appreciate your time.
Always, always available, you guys have all my phone number, one up. If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, could I read just this part that was part of the contract that seemed to get some folks tripped up?
Please.
I won't read everything, but you guys haven't seen this, this is our standard contract we have with every county, annual agreement. Part of it says here, more, "For more than a hundred years, MSU has helped grow Michigan's economy by equipping Michigan residents with the information needed to do their jobs better, raise healthy and safe families, build their communities, and empower our children to succeed. And it is the mission of MSU to help improve lives through educational process that applies knowledge to critical issues, needs, opportunities. And further, as an organization committed to the principles of diversity, equity, inclusion, we will work collaboratively with our community partners to ensure participation in the broad human diversity of each community, which includes race, color, religion, national origins, age, sex, disability, height, weight, marital status, gender, gender identity, political beliefs, sexual orientation, family status, veteran status, or any other factor prohibited by applicable law. And we work to make our programs accessible and inclusive of the multiple realities and forms of knowledge that will support equitable outcomes for all of Michigan's eighty-three That's what this is. I'm proud, I appreciate your support, I'm proud to work for an organization that wants to reach more people in different ways, and has a hundred-year history of being able to help impact positive change in communities. So I thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Gentlemen, additional discussion or...
I would move that we enter into the agreement for the extension services as presented in our packet.
We have a motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner, additional discussion.
What was that increase again, Ashley?
Four percent.
Four, four percent?
Thousand bucks.
Okay, and what's the total amount that would be?
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one...
Fifty-one or fifty-four.
Is it fifty-three thousand, one hundred and four would be the total we're going to be giving them this year?
That was fifty.
I just want the public to know how much...
It's fifty-one thousand.
The appropriation is fifty-one, I think that reflects the four percent increase.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to get it out there.
All right, we have, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second. All those in favor?
Can we have a little discussion?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to say unfortunately, reading the contract, he brought out the equity and outcome, and as I said, I'm still going to support it because I don't think that our children need to be suffering for that, but that's the exact thing I'm concerned about. I believe in equality and opportunity, I do not believe in equity of outcome. Equity of outcome puts all the same, all the players at the same ending game, whether they deserve it or not. At that, that's all I wanted to say.
No, I concur, I, like I said, I'm not a fan of DEI, I am a fan of 4H, and I'm not prepared to remove my support yet, you know, I mean, so, anybody else, please?
Right here.
Please?
Yeah, I have a similar thought that Commissioner Peterson does, and I found that if they co-opt the language, they co-opt the issue, and the more they put that out there, the more it becomes acceptable when it's not really truly what's taking place, and it's, the whole aspect of critical race theory originates from the universities, then gets pushed into the government, then it gets jammed down our throats. So unless the language changes, I really can't support this. Thank you.
All right, Nancy, your roll call, please.
Sure. Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.